All this workshop into session is 6:15. We do have a forum. Just a reminder that microphones are live and pick up all sound from the dials. And the audience here regardless if the meeting is live or recessed. We will go over the consent from regular agenda items. You'll pull out your, council people, your meeting minutes. We have Councilmember Cajun indication. I'll be doing the pledge of allegiance and the attendance of the mayor. We have a proper proclamation for National Public Works Week. We have Ronnie's, Council Canine's presentation.
Praying for my husband. That girl may have to come home with me.
Item E, public hearing. Item one, any comments, concerns? Then we have the citizens forum. Consent agenda, item G three. G four. G five. G six. We have a regular hearing, item H seven. H eight. H nine. We will go over, we will go over H nine, some of the committees briefly. We have to talk about them out there, but any comments right now on the item H nine?
I guess when are we going to get the applications?
So after the committees, once you guys vote on the committees, we're going to get the patents together for the specific committees. And it goes out to you guys next. This came from the mayor's recommendations for these. Reports, we have the quarterly investment report, which we will not read, correct?
That's right. It's just for you guys to receive and read on your own.
Item two, city council staff reports, our general reports. We will return to workshop if necessary, if we don't get through this part of it. We do have closed session, correct?
Yes, we have a consultation with attorney.
Just one item?
Just one item.
And that is it. So next item on the list, I believe we're going to go through the budget next. So Ashley, you're up.
I'm going to try and stand in your way here. My name is Ashley Karlov. I am the budget manager for the city of Louisville. I wanted to take this time to introduce Heather Brown, who is our new budget analyst. So she's been here for a couple of months. So I'm going to walk you through our mid-year budget report for fiscal year 2024. This is typically something that we bring to city council during May of each year. And then I'll give you an idea of some of the things that you might see in fiscal year 2025's budget as well. Okay, sure. All right, slide. Okay. So next slide, please. This is what we're going to talk about. So I'm going to go over some of our larger revenue outlooks right now as compared to our adopted budget. We're going to talk about some position updates and then departmental budget updates as well. We will give you an update on our ARPA project allocations and then our ERP project update. That's our enterprise resource planning project that will replace our financial system and a couple of our human resources systems as well. And then lastly, I'll talk about the supplemental appropriations that are on your consent agenda for tonight. Next slide, please. So going straight into revenue outlooks, this is for our general fund here. Largest sources of revenue are property tax and sales tax. For property tax, we are looking at ending the year essentially the adopted budget, which is 56.2 million. For sales tax, we did provide an update on this during city council retreat. Since then, we've received a little more information. We found out that our April sales tax allocation was 10.1% higher than April of last year. And our May allocation was 4% higher than May of last year as well. So we are expecting to end the year over $3 million over our adopted budget there. We do budget sales tax conservatively from year to year because it can be volatile. And we'll talk a little bit later about potential sales tax sourcing and how it may impact some of these other funds. And then all of the other revenues in general fund are in that other revenues category. I'll talk about some of those in more detail in just a second. But overall, for these categories, we're expecting to end the year about $1 million over that adopted budget. Next slide, please. So for general fund revenues, I wanted to talk a little bit about the individual revenue trends that we're seeing here. So for this slide and the next slide, we'll talk about some revenues that are trending up. And then I'll talk about a couple of revenue sources that are trending down as well. For franchise taxes, this is really a category of revenues. There's about 10 or 11 categories that make up our franchise taxes. We're projecting about a $210,000 increase, mostly related to our cost, I'm sorry, cost or franchise fees and then water and sewer as well. We are monitoring some other franchise taxes that may be decreasing as well. And then moving into our landfill host fees, we are seeing about a $290,000 increase. This is mostly related to the Allied Republic landfill that was recently reopened to receive construction decree and the farmer's branch landfill that is Camelot that is currently open for service. Waste management will be closing at some point in the future. We budget that revenue very conservatively. We've just seen it's taken a little bit longer than we originally anticipated. So we are still receiving some of those revenues. And then for park dedication, park development and tree mitigation, this is based on projects that have already occurred to date as well as projects that we know are in process. For those three categories, we're expecting overall to see an increase of about $70,000. Next slide, please. For court fines, we are seeing an increase here. And this is directly related to citations that are being filed with the court. To put this into perspective, for fiscal year 24 to date, we have already had more citations filed with the court than last year in the entire fiscal year. So we are seeing increased revenues there as well as our warrants and other fees where we're projecting a $190,000 increase. And then for engineering inspection fees, I wanted to talk a little bit about this. So council may recall, this is one of the fees where we had to change how this was calculated for fiscal year 2024. In the past, this was based on construction cost due to state legislature. This was House Bill 3492, I believe. We had to transition this to be based on the hourly cost of the city to provide the service or the cost for a third party to administer it. So there's really two factors that could play into this. One could be the formula change could be leading to this increase here, but also it could just be two projects that are currently occurring in this fiscal year. So as we move into the fiscal year 2025 budget, we will really isolate that. That way we can determine how much of this is due to that formula change. Next slide. So then I also wanted to talk about some general fund revenues that are trending down as well. For our LISD school resource officer program, we are showing about a $238,000 decrease. But what this is, is an adjustment to how the Rover program is administered. So the Rover program was implemented with the fiscal year 2023 budget. So it's a fairly new program. Instead of that reimbursement coming into the city as a revenue per se, it's now coming into the city as a reimbursement for our overtime expenses. So it is going to that overtime account. So this is just an adjustment in terms of how that program is administered. And then for building permits, we're projecting about a $368,000 decrease. This is one of the items that we talked about during city council retreat. But since retreat, our neighborhood and inspection services team, along with some other departments, have identified potential projects that could occur in fiscal year 2024. However, we are keeping our revised estimate conservative just to be on the safe side here. And then for our mixed beverage tax, this is the city's portion of the state tax that's imposed when mixed beverages are consumed on site. So restaurants, bars, things like that. We're showing about a $76,000 decrease here. This is not something that's so too much concern to us. It's really, most of our revenues are trending up. And I wanted to make sure I showed you our top three revenues trending down. So that one's not something we're very concerned about. Next slide. And moving into the hotel occupancy tax. So what you can see here is for our hot fund, I've got the fire, I'm sorry, the previous five fiscal years as well as our current fiscal year shown on the chart here. You've seen different iterations of this chart over the last few years. You can see the decrease in actuals in fiscal year 2020 that was due to the pandemic. And then moving into 2022, 2023, and now we have seen a rebound in these revenues. And you can see by the yellow bars indicated here, we intentionally budgeted those revenues low because of the volatility in this fund. So we wanted to make sure that we were very conservative here. Now that we see we have bounced back, we are narrowing that gap. And then we are still projecting to come in over budget for fiscal year 2024 by about $300,000. Next slide, please. For crime control, fire control and 4B sales tax, we did talk a little bit about these funds during city council retreat. Depending on the outcome of sales tax sourcing, we could see impacts to these funds. But in terms of fiscal year 2024, we're expecting to see crime control and fire control in the year about $300,000 over the adopted budget. And then for the 4B sales tax fund, we are expecting about a $600,000 increase over the adopted budget. Next slide, please. For utility fund revenue projections, I show water sales and then sewer sales on this chart here. For water sales, this can be heavily dependent on weather. So if we have a rainy year season, we might see less revenues. Or if we have a hotter season, we can see increased revenues. We are projecting to end the year at about 32.6 million. But to put this into perspective, for last year's actuals, we ended the year at about 34.2. So this is a little bit lower than that. But again, we do base our budget off of the normalized year here. And then for sewer services, we are essentially budgeting flat. So we think we're going to be bringing in the same amount of revenue that we budgeted, if not just barely underneath that. Next slide, please. Then for the drainage fund, so really what I wanted to demonstrate on this chart here is the last few years, you can see that increase in our budget. You can see the increase in our actuals. This is due to the rate increase that council adopted over the last few years. You can see we do have a trend of typically ending up higher than what we've budgeted. We anticipate that trend to continue for fiscal year 24. We anticipate coming in about $300,000 over the adopted budget here as well. Next slide. Okay, so now I wanted to shift gears a little bit and talk about some position updates and departmental budget updates. One of the changes that we made over the last few months was eliminating the sustainability manager position from the city manager's office. And at that time, we created the urban forester in the parks and recreation department. So along with that change, we moved about $57,000 from the city manager's office budget for sustainability to the parks and recreation department for that position and for some other programs like Roots or Wings. And this is just the amount that's needed for fiscal year 2024. So the budget that you will see for 2025 will include the full amount for that position in these programs. And then another change, thank you, council, was the backflow assistant position. This has been re-titled to backflow compliance specialist. And it has moved from the neighborhood and inspection services department to public services. So now public services will be responsible for administering that program moving forward. And again, we moved about $45,000 from the NIS budget to public services to cover the remainder of fiscal year 2024. Fiscal year 2025 will show the full impact of that change. And then the accounting technician position, this is all within the finance department. So stayed within the department here, but the part-time accounting technician position became full-time while the full-time accounting assistant position became part-time. So all of that stayed within the finance budget. So overall, we are not seeing a net change in our full-time position count at this point in time. We will talk a little bit later about the city attorney's office. But in terms of updates that have already been made, we remain at the same account. And then for non-departmental, we have moved funding out to various departments that you see listed here for our final part-time compensation study results. For the general fund, this meant about $250,000. That was distributed out to various departments that are mostly funded from the general fund. And then for the utility fund, about $6,600 was moved out to public services and finance. One thing I wanted to note here is that all of those changes occurred within the existing adopted budget authority that council approved. So we were just able to move it from non-departmental to these respective departments. Next slide. Okay, and then I also wanted to provide an update on our ARPA program. So this is the American Rescue Plan Act. As a reminder, we receive these revenues due to the COVID-19 pandemic. They can only be used for certain things. So if it is to supplant revenue loss related to the pandemic or for construction in areas that were disproportionately impacted due to the pandemic, that's what we are able to use these funds on. I know there's a lot of information on this slide here, but the important thing that I wanted to get across is that we have to have all of these funds encumbered essentially on a purchase order by December 31st of this calendar year. And then by December 31st of 2026, all of that has to be spent. So really the most important information are these three columns over here. So between what we have already spent and what we have encumbered, it's about 90% of our allocation. So we have about 10% that still needs to be allocated. Most of that is the 1.8 million for West College Street. And then there is 122,000 for Ace Lane. That will go to bid in June and July of this year. Most of the remaining funding will be for Glory Park. And then as we find savings available in some of these other allocations, we are able to ship that funding to projects that we know are ARPA eligible so that we're able to get all of these funds encumbered by our deadline. Next slide. I also wanted to provide a project update on our ERP process. So as a reminder, council funded a little over $2 million in one-time implementation costs for our fiscal year 2024 budget. And you also funded $250,000 in ongoing costs. Since this has been funded, we have worked with our implementation consultant to conduct a four-day workshop with probably about 20 to 30 staff. So right now we are working through mapping our process requirements. And our ITS department has identified out of other agencies that have implemented a similar software, we anticipate needing about $2 to $3 million more in terms of implementation costs and then possibly an additional $200,000 in ongoing costs. Next slide. It's shocking how much software can cost. Really, it becomes obsolete in three years, max. We've had our others longer than three years. Yes, we're still moving forward. Right now, our timeline is hopefully to have a vendor selected by the end of this calendar year. So we are moving towards that quickly. But yes, we've got a timeline set up for that. Okay, so the last part of this presentation is just walking through the supplementals that are on tonight's consent agenda. The first one is for general fund. The majority of this supplemental is for park development, parkland dedication and tree mitigation revenues. So for last year's budget, this is for fiscal year 2023, we received more revenues than what we budgeted. So we are asking council for the authority to spend that additional revenue to move that out to these applicable capital projects. And we've got the breakdown here by revenue source. And then the remaining $40,705 is for a full-time paralegal position within the city attorney's office. Currently, there is a part-time paralegal that will be retiring this fiscal year. So this will give that office the opportunity to cross-train with that paralegal before she leaves. So for fiscal year 2024, we estimate this impact to be just over $40,000. But then again, in fiscal year 2025's budget, you will see the full impact of that. And that will be 119,000, including salary and benefits. And then one other item I wanted to note here is that we are monitoring selective enforcement related to overtime for the police department. We're currently seeing elevated trends there. We'll continue to monitor that throughout the year, but we may come back to city council for a supplemental appropriation later in the year. For the grants fund, 158,000 of this is related to a Department of Energy Conservation block grant for electric vehicles and hybrid vehicle replacements. Our city management has worked with Fleet to develop a list of potential vehicles that this grant funding could be used for. Then about 25,000 of this is for the justice assistance grant that council has already accepted this award in February, I believe it was February 19th. This is just funding the expenditure for that grant. As a reminder, this is a grant that was applied for by the city of Denton. And as a result, Louisville receives a portion of that revenue. So this just allows us to budget those expenditures that will be used for vest and equipment for officers. And then the remaining is for 360,000 for fire department deployments. We are currently in our severe weather season, about to go into hurricane season here shortly. And then on top of that, we've got a wildfire season that will be starting up as well. So we are looking at needing additional funding for those.
I have a question about that. Are we still deploying down to the border?
We're not, actually, right now, we're not deploying at all. We have some issues with, they're trying to work out with workers' comp. So we're just on pause, but we expect, hopefully, that they'll get that resolved. But the border deployment has been discontinued.
And then one other item I wanted to note here is that all of the expenditures that we're asking for during the supplemental will have offset in revenues. So whether this is in the form of a reimbursement for these grants or whether we receive the funding upfront, all of these expenditures will have an associated revenue. For the utility fund, we are asking for 7 million. Council may recall during retreat, the public services department presented a study about the, I'm sorry, an update to our East Side Sewer Study that really talked about the need for the Midway Forest Main and Midway Lift Station in terms of accelerated development in that area. Originally, when we budgeted the 24 budget, we budgeted about 22 million in terms of cash and revenue bonds for utility infrastructure. Since this study update has been completed, now we estimate that to be about 29 million for this current fiscal year. We do have cash reserves available in our utility fund. That will leave us with an ending fund balance of about 21.8 million. Next slide. For the risk fund, we are asking for about 287,000. This is due to a variety of factors here. We're seeing an increase in insurance premiums. We're seeing an increase in siren maintenance for our outdoor warning sirens, workers' compensation claims, and then other liability claims as well. And then again, on this fund, I wanted to note that this is an internal service fund. So this is funded by charges to other departments. We have already brought the revenue into this fund and there is enough revenue to support these increased expenditures here. For the 4B fund, we're asking for 736,000. The majority of that is related to a payment from the 4B fund to the debt service fund for outstanding debt obligations. This is our normal debt obligation that we anticipate every year. It's just a shifting of where we fund it from. And then the remaining amount, the 53,674, is for our part-time compensation study of results. So those results are a little more fluid as compared to our full-time results. So at any given time, our part-time positions can change. So this is just a correction to how those results came in. Next slide. Then for our other post-employment benefits fund or our OPEB fund, 117,630 is needed as an adjustment that's necessary to support the total expected claims reimbursement for this year. This is provided via an actuarial estimate. We do have the funds available in the OPEB fund balance to address this. Next slide. And then lastly, for our TERS 3 fund, all of this amount will go towards a reimbursement to Bright Realty. Our incremental property tax revenues came in higher than anticipated, which in turn leads to a higher reimbursement to the developer. And just as a reminder, this payment does reduce the outstanding amount that is due to the developer as a part of this economic development agreement. And that is all I have for you this evening.
I have a question. And usually I get on top of this, but I missed a window this time, so I don't know if the finance is back to me. So the court fee, whenever I see court costs, court fees going up, I get mixed emotions about that. You said we outstrip already this year, already outpace what we did all last year. Do we have any insight into why that is? Is it backlog of fees being paid from the past year, some more enforcement, the types of, types of fines?
Traffic enforcement is kind of big, but also code enforcement and animal control involved in running tickets from enforcement. So I would say that's making our city a safer place.
Okay. So this is stepped up enforcement?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Mayor, can we get, going back to the pressure for the TERS 3, can we get that group to sit, hit the report?
Yes, about how far along we're getting towards paying? Yep.
I can get that out, anticipate that question. So as you know, the reimbursement is $88.7 million in total between economic development and redevelopment costs. To date, we've had seven draws. That means claims on that money totaling $50.6 million. So remaining potential draws, either through the EDE or their redevelopment agreement, is $38.1 million. To date, we've reimbursed $8.1 million. So I believe this is our third year that we've been reimbursing them, the funds, and it's come from both city and county reimbursements. So there's $80 million yet to be paid, but we're making good progress in just the first few years.
Thank you. Any other comments? I've got a couple. Oh, is there, are there any anticipated closing dates for Camelot or the Allied landfills?
Yes, so our public services team thinks it will still be a couple more years for waste management. Right now, they're thinking about four to five. I know it's been pushed out a couple of years. So we do still budget that revenue source very conservatively. We continue to bring in that revenue as long as it's open, but the most recent update is about four to five years at this point.
And now it got reopened, but how much, how much more capacity does Allied have, I guess? Is that the four to five?
Waste management would be the four to five year. We can get information regarding Allied Republic. That was the, it has a long period of time, Allied does.
I'm sorry, I don't have that, that much capacity.
There's, I remember looking at it before. I don't have the number, but we'll get it for you.
They're not a fair, Allied or Camelot, you know, we're still have, we still have access to those for a while.
Yes, yeah, I mean, those are still.
They have gone up numerous times.
And then the tree mitigation fund, as far as that fund, is, is there options for those that are going to that? I know typically you can either plant trees or do the fund. So what's, and I guess a couple of cases, why they chose tree mitigation versus planting trees?
Probably a planning, what, Michelle?
Here, sorry.
Michelle, do you want to talk about tree mitigation and why they choose one versus the other?
So usually they mitigate the fees if they can't find any reasonable room to replant on-site. Most people prefer to replant on-site because it's, it's just easier for them. But if they run out of space to fit the required amount of inches, then they'll pay the fee.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Chief, on the overtime, and she said there's a trend going up. Do we see that stabilizing once we get everybody out of training and we're running full capacity?
It's a complicated answer to that directly because it doesn't just impact patrol officers. It also impacts jail and dispatch where we have some vacancies. And so backfilling those positions and hiring for those are just as important as hiring for patrol.
Oh, absolutely.
To answer your question directly, yes, we would anticipate as all positions are full that we would be able to stabilize our overtime consumption barring trends or issues that would require immediate attention.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Ashley. Next item on the list is the presentation of the Police Department crime statistics.
Okay. Are you running the chat? No. Are you running it or am I running it?
I'm running it.
No, you're running it. Thanks, I appreciate you. Okay, Brooke Rollins, I'm your police chief here in Louisville. And I wanted to take a few minutes to chat with you about some crime statistics and some ideas that we have or I have for managing our crime statistics for the police department. So, next slide. When I sat down and had an opportunity to first start looking at this, I noticed a couple of challenges with our current crime statistics that we publish on our departmental webpage. And those, what I came to the conclusion of, these seem very antiquated. They seem a little old. They seem like they could be revised and updated and they could actually become a little more actionable. And I found that our staff's not always been generally aware of what's happening with crime in the city and why we want to respond the way that we respond. And so if that's the case, then the public is probably not also able to review that crime data for themselves and make decisions about their neighborhoods or so forth. So one of the struggles that we're dealing with in this area is the fact that quick changes to the system are going to be locked up by our new RMS system. That system is coming online later in a month or two. We, we are confident that will be the case, but a lot of that data is tied to our RMS or records management system. And a lot of that data, some of those data connections are broken right now. And so we aren't able to publish that information in real time or close to real time for our public and for our police department. Next slide. So what I want to talk to you about is what we're trying to. So what I want to talk to you about is what we're trying to do with some of our crime statistics. I wanted to evaluate and kind of augment our reporting systems in a way that can be beneficial to both the police department and the external, because looking internally about how we operate, why we operate, when and where, those are important, but also we want our community to understand why we're doing those things as well. And then I want to improve our efficiency and how we allocate resources. As you all know, we email and text frequently about what happens in the city, and the best way to dedicate police resources to that, but sometimes we can find ourselves chasing our tails if we're just dealing with the problem of the moment and not able to look strategically at why that's a problem right now. So I want to be able to put the department in a good position as we are responding to crime requests and trends. And so this will help us drive some of that operation. Our intelligence should be telling us where to go instead of us randomly selecting or identifying what's important unless something critical to that moment has directed the operation. We should be using the intelligence we have to decide where we need to go next. So with that, we can enhance some employee buy-in and then hopefully foster some transparency with the, with the community at large. Next slide. So what are we doing? Well, right now, what we're doing is we're overhauling our monthly reports that we have. And I know that you can clearly read all of these graphics over here. It's going to make it much longer to put every single one of them on a page for you. But this is some ideas that, we have a crime analyst that works for our police department. His name is Ashley Pavey, and he is hands down responsible for the construction of all of this outlook based on some ideas that I had about where I wanted this to go. But he had already been working on a lot of this himself, so all of the credit goes to him for how the construction of these products looked. What we're trying to do is come up with some new formats that give clear understanding of what the data we're analyzing is and what we intend to do with that data. This will give everybody some timeframes and geographic markers that will help us make two decisions. Police departments should be focusing two-way. We should be looking strategically at how we operate. That is, we're looking long-term, what we have historically been doing and why we're in this position now. And we should also be looking tactically at the way we operate, but not tactically like the way the police officers take down a warrant or something like that. Tactically is in what's happening right at this moment, because sometimes there could be an acute issue that's facing a community that requires an immediate response versus one that's long-term over the course of several months or years. So these systems will allow us to make some decisions like that. We will have rolling averages involved in these and also beat specificity. So we'll be able to zero in on some of these areas and look at crime trends in certain areas as to whether they're up or down, long-term or short-term, and how that impacts the police department. And just for some quick reference, we have new graphs that talk about not just our past month, but it talks about our past year, and then it talks about our past five years and how that data is changing. It color codes it so that our employees can read it and make a clearer understanding of why that's important, why that's trending up, and why that's trending down. We've also broken down some of our graphs by beat so that our beat commanders, our beat leaderships will be able to look at those numbers and make decisions about what's happening in their beat. And then we also have some 18-month trends that we've kind of thrown up as some examples and ideas. Offenses against persons, offenses against property are color-coded differently. We've added trend lines. I want our command staff, I want our officers to be able to look at, okay, this is going down, but is it going down from an incredibly high position, or is it going down from a position where it was already down in the first place? Both are important because they may direct resources in different ways. So these are all things that we are rolling into some of our new programs. And then just another example of some of our tables that we're going to be bringing forward. Next slide. So what are we moving towards? We're moving towards some dashboards that we intend to publish. We're going to publish two versions of dashboards. The first ones will be internal, and I'm going to demonstrate this, or I'm not. Commander Mays is going to help me demonstrate this here in just a few minutes, but these are some internal-facing dashboards that we intend to roll out here in the very near future. These can be used by our supervision and our officers to click in and out of certain markers and zero in on what type of crime is impacting what type of area. There's always a community narrative about what type of crime somebody's experiencing by the numbers, but perception of crime is another angle of attack that I think is something that we address. Some people feel like there's a crime issue here, and there may not be, and sometimes there actually is, but it's just unreported. So these are statistics we want to try to grab as much as possible. So this can be interactive. We can, we can turn on certain layers, and we can allow those layers to help us look more deeply at some of these beats, put on more colored dots, heat them up, put some red to them so that officers can decide what that hotspot might look like. And this will help us deploy resources to the right area at the right time and for the right reason, which I think is a good, responsible way to use our money. Next slide. So this is a kind of a static view of what I'm going to show you at the tail end of this presentation, but this is the overall dashboard. It's got all of our crimes, or some of our crimes listed on the side. It counts them up based on whatever timeframe that we've selected. Last three months is this particular snapshot that we're looking at. And then we have beat codes that tells us what's happening by different beats. We have time of day, we have day of week, all things that officers can use to their advantage to make decisions about patrolling, and supervisors can use to make their decisions about deploying resources. Next slide. So then what about the public? They should be able to access some of this in real time. Well, that's kind of the next phase of this, of this program. We're going to publish some dashboards or have access to dashboards. It's important to note that the data we put in these dashboards will not be in real time. Our public is going to be looking at crimes that may have been reported several days ago or even a week or more, because it takes time for reports to get into the system, to be vetted by our records team, and once they've been vetted, to actually be counted as numbers in crime that we can start to look at. So the public will have the ability to look into these data sets and actually drill into whatever it was that was reported to the police department. This is neat because there's no special permission required to access this. The public can access it straight from our website with no needed login, and the residents can filter by crime type and date to see what's happening in their area and actually use that to create conversation with the police department or with the city about what's happening with them. Next slide. So looking ahead, what are we doing with this information? I have some plans in the future, in the summer and beyond, where I'm looking at some geographic accountability, taking the city and dividing it up by my commanders, by my sergeants, and by my officers. Empowering my officers in the field to make decisions about their crime-fighting techniques instead of relying on command staff to tell them where to go next. So this is a step in that direction, empowering that team with the needed data that they have to make decisions about their jobs. This will give us an opportunity to evaluate, reevaluate current and future staffing models and deployment strategies. We've got a great matrix that's telling us about that, but what about the future? Are we still focused in the right direction with that matrix? Helps us establish some performance metrics. What are we holding ourselves to from a standard? We're up in this area, but is that a matter to us that we need to be concerned of? We're down on vehicle burglaries, but are we really down? Are we just down this month, but we're still really high trending? These are all things that we can use to look at our performance metrics. And finally, I talked about a go-live of our new RMS. When it goes live, we'll have the ability to connect these systems, test, validate that they work, and then be able to populate these dashboards. So a lot of things are kind of driving each next step. Next slide. So I'm going to hold the questions to the end, but I'm going to ask Commander Mays to come up and plug into the system and just give you a quick, quick, interactive look at this dashboard, and then if you have questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you.
Just talking about the city.
Sorry for all the back and forth. Sorry. Okay. Okay. So this is just a quick, a quick look at a live dashboard. We actually can work right now with crime numbers. Now, what's important to point out is the data does not represent all completed crimes. This represents things that were reported to the police department. Some crimes can be reduced, charges can be dropped, charges can be added, crimes can be dismissed if there was no offense. This just represents what the police department responded to and took a report of, okay? So we have all the different codes that we use that tell us what different types of offenses are out. This is actually how we talk in the office about 13As and 520s and what those offenses actually mean to us, but then we can actually separate it out by beat. So right now, we have a queue to the last three months. Let's get into burglaries, Elizabeth, and show us something for the last year if you can find that for us. And if not, then you are welcome to go to robberies.
I sure can. Burglaries are 220s.
Burglaries are 220s. So now we can look over the, we can have our team look at the last three months of burglaries. Just in this last three months, we see a collection of dots right here. I'm not going to click on the dots right now. The reason is because it'll actually bring up victim information that our department can use. So in lieu of publishing that here, I'll just tell you that that gives us some granular access that we can go into and actually review. And these are things that behind the firewall with login credentials and CEGIS access, people can access and look at from the city side. And so we can then change that to a longer term, we can change it to a further back look, and in the future, we'll be able to, we'll be able to heat up these maps or actually hotspot these maps and be able to help us direct resources based on hotspots. Cops are good with those types of graphics. Instead of just looking at all the dots, they can see where that heated up area looks that would allow us to make some decisions from there if you're able to on short notice here. But if we're specifically looking for one, one date between October 2nd and 31st of 2023, now we can actually pull up the data and see where we were concentrated in that area for that time as we make decisions about resources. So this is just a high-level look at where we're trying to take some of our crime stats and where we're moving some of the department operations in the later part of this summer from some geographic accountability standpoint. So I'll stop there, and if you have any questions, I'm glad to try to entertain them.
Everything about this, I'm a data junkie. We just had to example this today, now, not serious crime, but speeding crime, and you would be able to come back within a couple hours and saying, oh, we actually had 200 hours of patrol time along that road. It goes a long way with public credibility. I am interested to hear maybe not now, but a future point. I think about crime, that's not a police issue, that's a parks issue, that's a council issue, that's a neighbor services issue. It's preventing the crime before it gets a chance to take hold. I'd love to see how we use this data to move that, move the prevented upstream part with the other departments in the city. It'd be great.
Yeah, and just recently in a couple of directors meetings before, we had a conversation about this. We actually worked with parks about providing some added resources to some of their facilities over the summer when kiddos are out of school. So we, and we do that pretty regularly, but yes, I agree, there's, there's an opportunity for that.
I'm the same way. I like everything about this data, and the fact that the public's going to get some of this stuff, to me, it's just, I mean, hopefully it will quiet some of this stuff that's going on right now. So just, I love this, love this data.
And it'll be honest to really couch the discussion. These are not fully reported Texas DPS and FBI crime numbers. This is just intake information that came to the PD. Not every one of them was finished and completed, but this is what we recorded. So if you can't measure it, you can't manage it.
Correct.
So let's find the problem as we go through. If we see something that we need to start off with, that's okay. It informs us of what to do. We'll plan to play around that. I like it.
So the public-facing portion of this is going to look just like this, is that right?
It'll look, it'll look similar. They will have a, probably a little more user-friendly ability to go through and just click broader terms, dates, and types of crimes and so forth, and then it'll put icons on those types of crimes. It will give them block number usage, so not specific addresses, so they can't zero in on a neighbor's home. It'll take out screened information that we may not want to publish, that we may be required by law not to publish on these types of crimes like sexual assault victims and things to that nature. So some things will be screened out of view, and we'll do the best that we can to make those known in data statements.
Okay, and when will that, when will that be ready to go live?
So we're looking towards the end of the summer, first part of the fall. And the reason is just so we can connect our new RMS systems, test functionality. It's not going to be instantaneous at all, works right away. We have to kind of process these things on, test them and validate them, and then be able to publish them out. So we publish good information.
I think that's, that is, I'm fully supportive of taking our time and getting it right, so I'm good with that.
All right, we've got about three minutes left. Anything, any more comments? Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. You're in workshop and going to regular session at 7 o'clock.
All right, we will call the meeting into session. It is 7 o'clock, and we do have a quorum. Things may look a little bit different tonight. The mayor is out, so in the cases of that, the mayor pro temp runs the meeting, so I will be running the meeting tonight. First up, we have the invocation, Councilmember Cade, and then I will be doing the American and Texas flags.
Please join me in prayer. Father, guide us and give us discernment in all things that come before us tonight. Surround us with your wisdom. Let us stand in your strength and place a hedge of protection over our staff, our city, and our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Next up, we have a proclamation declaring the week of May 19th to the 25th as National Public Works Week. Wow, we've got a crew tonight. All right, I get to do the whereas's tonight. Proclamation by the City Council of the City of Louisville, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Louisville, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, and public buildings. And whereas the support of satisfied and informed residents is vital to the professional operation of public works and essential programs such as environmental services, streets, and storm drainage, traffic, fleet, utilities, and facility operations. And whereas it is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children in the city of Louisville to gain knowledge of and maintain it, an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Now therefore, I, TJ Gilmore, mayor of the city of Louisville, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to the 25th, 2024 as National Public Works Week. I will say, and I've had experience myself, these guys are what keeps this city running. They really are. I mean, you've got a water break, sewer break, when you flush your toilet, that's these guys. So, Aaron, want to say something?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public services is definitely a collective effort, all these guys up here, different departments. We could not achieve our goals without the support from city council and city management, so thank you very much. And under our leadership, we are committed to keep achieving great success here at public services. So thank you. Your job's done.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I will excuse the crowd. Thank you. 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 Okay, now we are going to go through our Council Canines Program. The Gene Carey Animal Shelter and Adoption Center is currently at capacity for large dogs. A city council member will highlight a large dog for adoption. The adoption fee for this pet has been waived, and all adoptions come with sterilization, microchip rabies vaccination, and one-year city registration. The Gene Carey Animal Shelter and Adoption, Adoption Center is located at 995 East Valley Ridge Road. Adoption center hours are Tuesdays from 12 to 7, Wednesdays through Friday from 10 to 5, and Saturday from 12 to 5. 5, and Saturday from 12 to 5. I believe we have a video with Councilmember Ronnie Cade, and no, Ronnie cannot keep the dog.
She is two years old, American pit bull terrier mix, and she has got wonderful manners and is so loving. She likes her treats, but certain ones, and she loves to fetch. She needs a forever home, but I might have to give her one today.
To everyone that, that dog was the sweetest, most polite, well-mannered dog. When I brought out a treat, she, of course, you can see her grin, she always has it on, but she sat and then gave me her paw, so I would give her a treat. So if y'all would like to save my marriage, somebody needs to give her forever home.
All right, item E, public hearing. Public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for manufacturing medium intensity on a portion of approximately 9.65 acres, legally described as Bison Grove Business Park Edition, Lot 2, Block A, located at 701 Spinks Road, Zone Light Industrial District, as requested by Casey Gregory of Sanchez &amp; Associates on behalf of Centerpoint Properties Trust, the property owner, case number 24-044-SUP. Green Valley Products is a manufacturer of spray foam insulation, looking to operate out of Bison Grove Business Park. Louisville's Unified Development Code, adopted in December of 2022, revised Louisville's zoning code and added new definitions distinguishing between light, medium, and heavy intensity manufacturing. Green Valley Products manufacturing process is considered medium intensity manufacturing, and a special use permit is required to allow a medium intensity manufacturing use within the Light Industrial Zoning District. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, five to nothing, on May 7th, 2024. Recommendation that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We will now, we do have Richard Lukey, or actually, we have Michelle available for questions. We will now open the public hearing.
I had a, Michelle, I had a question slash comment. So just, or clarification, really, this is, this is for a tenant in an existing building, correct? This is not a new, new build warehouse?
Correct. The warehouse is existing, this would be a tenant occupying a portion of it.
Okay, so this looks like it's maybe about, maybe close to a little between a quarter and a third of one of the buildings.
That's correct.
Okay. And is this an existing business in the city, or is it a new business?
It is a new business, and we identified them through the CO application process.
Great, thank you.
Council, any other comments, questions, concerns? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the, move to close the public, public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Six to nothing. Do we have a motion to, a motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for manufacturing medium intensity on a portion of approximately 9.65 acres legally described as Bison Grove Business Park Edition, Lot 2, Block A, located at 701 Spinks Road and Zone Light Industrial District, providing for a repealer severability penalty and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Council, will you please vote? Six to nothing, motion passes. Item two, public hearing, consideration of ordinance granting a special use permit for automotive repair minor on a portion of approximately 7.662 acres legally described as Lot 5R, Block A, Crossroads Center, North Edition, located at 2601 East State Highway 121, Suite 206, Zone Light Industrial District, as requested by Jason Burrell, Masterpiece Printing, on behalf of RLS Realty LLC, the property owner, case number 24033-SUP. Lakeside at 121 is an office warehouse development that is being built to house service contractors in similar uses. Currently, four of the five proposed buildings have been built in the first phase of the project. Masterpiece Printing is a company that prints and installs vinyl on automobiles and operates out of an eight, 1,812 square foot tenant space within Lakeside at 121. They are seeking a special use permit to allow the onsite application of vinyl on automobiles. SUP regulations adopted in 2013 required an SUP with all auto repair minor businesses. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, six to nothing, on April 16th, 2024. Recommendation that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Michelle for questions. We will now open the public hearing.
Michelle, I wanted to ask a similar question with this one. So this is, again, not a new build, this is a tenant space in an existing building, and I believe this one's also a, an existing business in the city that is, sounds like expanding their operation?
Yeah, this is actually another new business, or relocation, anyway. I'm not sure where his previous location was, if it was within Louisville or a different city. But yes, it's within the prime office buildings that were already constructed and completed, and it would be a leased space within that suite, or he has a suite or leased space within that building.
Perfect, thank you.
Along the, along the same veins, this is entirely compatible with other things that are out there already. There's no, no impact to quality life, any residential, anything like that. It's all, it's where it should be, is what I'm getting at.
Correct, yes, we don't foresee, it's in an industrial kind of area, and based on his business model, he won't be having any vehicles stored outside or anything like that. Most of his work's actually done offsite, but occasionally he might bring one or two vehicles to the property to do the reps.
That's what I'm looking at, the documents as well, says no more than two, two vehicles out there, so we're not looking at 47 cars littering a lot, so.
That is correct.
All right, do we have any further comment? Can you please have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All vote? Passes six to nothing. Also can I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to, move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Council, do we have any further comments?
I need to second it. Second.
Any further comments? All right, City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for automotive repair minor on a portion of an approximately 7.662 acres, either legally described as Lot 5R, Block A, Crossroads Center, North Edition, located at 2601 East State Highway 121 Business and Zone Light Industrial District, providing for repealer severability penalty and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Council, will you please vote? Motion passes six to zero. Item F, visitor assistance forum. City Secretary, do we have any signs or ecomments?
No, sir, we sure don't.
All right. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and addresses prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Do we have any comments? Consent agenda, are there any, any items or ecomments?
No, sir, no items to be pulled, and there is no ecomments on any consent items.
All the following, all the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of any item, a speaker card, or ecomment, must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Council, do I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Council, please vote. Item passes six to zero. Item H7, regular hearing, consideration of two alternative standards related to screening and lighting for a proposed commercial building on a 3.29 acre lot legally described as Blake C. Bone Edition, Block A, Lot 2, located on the north side of Justin Road, FM 407, approximately 400 feet west of IH 35E, Zone Light Industrial District, as requested by Samuel Mortimer, Planning Agency LLC, on behalf of Louisville 407 and 35 Partnership, the property owner, case number 24022, alternate standard. Specs Family Partners Limited, Specs Wines, Spirits, and Finer Foods, AKA Specs, received four alternative standards on March 4th, 2021, for a new retail building on the north side of Justin Road, FM 407. Since then, they have worked with Texas New Mexico Power to locate a required transformer box and develop their photometric plan. They are requesting the following two additional alternative standards. A, to allow a transformer box to be screened with an alternative method as shown in the exhibits, and B, to allow two areas where the minimum lighting level be below .5 foot candles. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, five to zero, on May 7th, 2024. Recommendation that the City Council approve the two alternative standards as set forth in the caption above. Michelle is available for questions. Do we have any questions?
I, I had a quick question. I got a little confused about where the transformer is, is it going to be up against the street, or is it in the back?
It's on what is considered the primary pedestrian path, so it's not the public street. It's the area where there will be the shared drive going to the north that goes up towards what was the putt-putt and go-kart track, and will hopefully continue going north to new development in the future. So it's along that part, it's on the northwest corner of the building, but that's where they relocated all of their pedestrian amenities and things. So they've had to take out a parking space, they still do meet their required parking in order to still put those pedestrian amenities in, as well as the transformer and the screening for the transformer.
Okay, and so when it talks about in order to maintain necessary clearance?
That's Texas New Mexico's clearance from the transformer, the screening wall has to be a certain distance from it.
I move to approve the two alternative standards as set forth in the caption.
Second.
Council, please vote. Item passes six to zero. Item H8, consideration of alternative standards associated with landscaping standards for a restaurant on 4.47 acres legally described as Valley Squares, Lot 3 and 4 and 5, Block A, located on the south side of West Main Street, approximately 600 feet west of Edmunds Lane, at 724 West Main Street, Zone General Business District, as requested by Pollo Padilla, ID Studio 4, on behalf of Dave's Hot Chicken, on property lease, less a 24045, alternate standard. Dave's Hot Chicken is a new restaurant opening in an existing suite at 724 West Main Street. The proposed facade changes trigger landscaping enhancements meeting the IH 35E core sub-district overlay. They are requesting an alternative standard to allow a new landscape island containing shrubs and one canopy tree, along with two canopy trees with an existing island area in lieu of the required canopy trees every 40 feet on center along the street frontage. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommend unanimous approval, five to zero, on May 7th, 2024. Recommendation that the City Council approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption above. And Michelle is available for questions. Any comments? Council, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption.
Motion passes, I don't think I had a chance to vote. Okay, I'm, I'm, there it goes. Item passes six to zero. No.
Do we need to click it again? Yep.
Go ahead and vote again. Okay, motion passes six to zero. Okay, item H9, consideration of initiating the board commission committee appointment process and the creation of city council subcommittees. On June 30th, 2024, various terms of office on city boards, commissions, and committees will be expiring. Those positions have been identified and current appointees notified. City council will need to notify, will need to identify city council subcommittees to review eligible reappointees, new applicants, and provide nominees for council's consideration during a future meeting. Recommendation that the city council initiate the board's commission committee appointment process and create the city council subcommittees as set forth in the caption. I'll need a motion, if there's any, any commentary from city council on the board appointments?
Yes, I move to initiate the board commissioners committee appointment process and create the city council subcommittee committees as follows. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Kelly and Councilwoman Cade, they will be, make the subcommittee for CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, Library Board, Park Board, Louisville Parks and Library Corporation 4B, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number 4. Councilwoman Green and Councilwoman Troyer, Old Town Design Review Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number 2, Zoning Board of Adjustment, Louisville Local Government Corporation. Councilman Jones and Mayor Pro Tem William Meredith, Arts Advisory Board, Animal Services Advisory Committee, Tax Reinvestment, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zones Number 1 and Number 3.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Council, please vote. Passes six to zero. Reports, reports about items that can be interest regarding which no action will be taken. We have the quarterly investment report from January 1st to March 31st, 2024. Do we have, Dave, do we have any comment on that? Okay. City council staff reports, Bob, can we start with you?
Yes, I will, I will go ahead with my report on the events at Grand, the Grand Theater First of all, the number of performances, Texas tunes, Cody Canada and the Departed will be presented by the City of Louisville on June 1st. Sounds of Louisville, Even It Up with Grazzi, presented by the City of Louisville at Wayne Ferguson Plaza on May 21st. That would be tomorrow night. And then Sounds of Louisville next week, Havana, NRG with Paola Ardone, presented by the City of Louisville at Wayne Ferguson Plaza, and that date is May 28th. And as always, the acoustic jam sessions on Friday evenings, 6 to 9, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. Then activities occurring, Louisville Talk Speaker Series, Mary Anais Hegler, The Weight of the World, presented by the City of Louisville, May 21st. Free fitness, there are free fitness classes in Wayne Ferguson Plaza, yoga in the plaza on Wednesdays, bodyweight boot camp on Thursdays and Fridays, tai chi in the plaza Saturdays, and Pilates in the plaza on Saturdays. And exhibitions, Emotional Rollercoaster, a solo exhibition by CJ Miller, Artist Talk and Reception on May 18th, that's in the past, presented by the City of Louisville through May 25th. Home, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville through June 1st, and Movements, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, June 1st through July 6th. And that is all I have to report.
City Attorney? City Secretary?
No report, sir.
Michelle? Christina? Mr. Salmon?
Yes, actually, I do have one this evening. It's with great excitement that I wanted to announce that we are planning a ribbon-cutting ceremony for our Windhaven Parkway project, where we have a tentative date of June 20th at 9:30 a.m., planned for our ribbon cutting. Staff will be sending the city council a tentative hold for your calendars for that date, and we'll be making a final determination late next week with regard to that June 20th date. And then, of course, once we have a solid date, we will be sending out formal invitations.
Mayor Pro Tem, council members, park fans, couple of announcements. One, just a reminder that the Sun Valley Aquatic Center
One, just a reminder that the Sun Valley Aquatic Center will open on June 2, from 2 to 6 p.m. And then the summer schedule is going to be June 2 through August 11, Monday through Fridays, 12 to 7 p.m. With Wednesdays will be closed for maintenance and in-service training with our team members. Saturdays will be 1 to 6, and Sundays 2 to 6. And then we'll go to a weekend-only schedule, starting August 12, as the kiddos head back to school. Current status on our lifeguards, we have 20 hired, trained, ready to go, but for a frame of reference, we need 40 to 50 to comfortably make it through a swim season without having additional closures. So we'll be having another hiring fair at Thrive Tuesday, May 28 through 1 to 5, trying to fill some of those positions. We have a few more in the pipeline going through hiring and training, but we really do need to get up to 40 to feel comfortable with that. You know, we, we've opened up the Old Town Splash Park. It's open seven days a week, so that we've at least have an experience there. And then we also have the Thrive pull open, but we're trying desperately to get enough lifeguards to keep Sun Valley open all summer long. Another reminder will be with the anticipated inch and a half of rain that we've got coming over the weekend, or over the rest of the week, it is highly likely that the boat ramps and courtesy docks at Lake Park will remain closed through the Memorial Day weekend. So anybody who's looking to hit the water over the weekend with a boat or jet ski needs to not come to Lake Park, because we have limited access throughout the park, and so it'll be a little bit of a crunch. And another reminder is to mention that there is no glass allowed in the park. So if you are bringing beverages, preferably non-alcoholic, to keep the glass at home.
Chantay?
Do you have one thing? Just happy to report that the lake is 100% full still.
More, 100 or more than 100?
Well, it's a little, it's about, it's almost three feet above 100%.
Mr. Herb?
No report, thank you.
Ms. McGrath? Chief? Chief? Aaron? Ted?
I just got a text from Councilwoman Cade's husband that said, "You're more than welcome to take that dog home." He said, "You can stop by the shelter tonight." So yeah, go ahead and pick him up, so. They says they'll open up for you. Got that, too.
Well, you'll have another opportunity on Saturday at the Barks and Brew Social Gathering for the Drunken Donkey on Round Grove Road from 1 to 4. That will be held by the Louisville Animal Services Department, and maybe some of our dogs are going to be at the event as well, and maybe Councilwoman Cade can take one home. Just that one, just Aha, okay.
Okay, I'm staying out of that one. I just want to reiterate just the recognition of Public Works. You know, when we talk about heroes, we talk about our police and our fire, but our Public Works folks, like, I remember doing the freeze that came out and they cut my water off, which is a good thing they did, because as soon as the power came back on, and I turned the water back on, we had a water leak. So those guys work tremendously hard to make sure the water flows in the right direction. So we just want to make sure we give them a shout out. And it's been a while since I've talked about our Louisville, Texas app. If you have any complaints or anything that you see that needs to be corrected, you can use the app. It's on the, you can find it on the Apple Store or the Google Play Store. You can download it. You put your email in. You can report things anonymously if you want to, but it's the best way to track your, whatever issue that you have, and you get instant feedback. I use it every day with help from my wife, so.
I would just like to recognize our Boy Scout troop back there. Would y'all like to stand up? Thank you for coming in, joining in, and visiting with us tonight.
City Manager?
I just wanted to wish luck to our economic development team, who is currently in minus one, is in Las Vegas at the, what is it called? The International Council of Shopping Centers event, which is basically where a bunch of cities send their economic development team and their mayors to go vie for the top names in retail, you know, entertainment, experience, those types of things, so that we can bring back some big fishes home, so.
All right, James has still got me busy doing library activities of the week. De-stress Fest for Teens, age 13, 18, Tuesday, May 21, and Wednesday, May 22, 4 to 6 p.m. at the Bennett Program Room. No registration is required. And Backyard Birding for Adults, May 21, 6:30 to 7:30, at the Crawford Meeting Room. No registration is required. Now, we will move into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Pending Litigation, and RE Payment Card Interchange Fee and Merchant Discount, Antitrust Legislation, Number 05MD1720MKBJ0, United States District, Eastern District of New York. We are now in, moving into closed session. All right, it is 7:42, and we are now adjourned.